All right. We will call this to the order of this meeting in Bridgeton City Council. If you would all please rise and join us in our delegations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation of Alabama, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
That's all. The court will now call roll.
Mrs. Abrams?
Here.
Mr. Pitts?
Here.
Mr. Grimmer?
Here.
Mr. Hein?
Here.
Mrs. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Purcell? Mr. Satell?
Here.
Mr. Zimmer?
Here.
Councilmember Purcell is a little late tonight. He had an unfortunate accident with one of the family members, so they will be joining us a little feebly anyway, I believe, joining us a little later. We are down to item D, which is the agenda approval for tonight's meeting.
Approved approval.
Second.
Motion is made in second for approval of tonight's agenda. Any comments, questions, changes, suggestions? Same none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Your agenda is approved tonight. We are down to item D, which is the public portion. And I will state to you, for this public portion, this is a chance just to address council or the administration. It's not part of the public hearing on the planned urban development. So we're going to do that in second. So this is if you have any other issues that you'd like to address council on. Anyone? Mr. Sidwell, did you want to talk to us? This is the time.
My name is Terrence Sidwell, and I live at 3177 Tornade Drive, that's in Bridgeton, in Bridgeton State. And at the moment, I'm having, I have been having...
Mr. Sidwell, you need to address the red up on the microphone. Sorry, but darkened the mic, so I don't know if you can tell what it's called. It's this. There you go. Thank you.
At any rate, I have had problems with two neighbors, and people suggest that they are not doing this on their own volition, that someone or some entity is guiding them. I list some of the hatred that they have used against me. I did not mention that on two occasions, they have, while walking up to my condominium doorways, they stand with their doorway's large patio doors and sprinkling with something like mace. Now, this was on two occasions, as my eyes would be burning. This is the same kind of thing that's in my condominium as well. I asked the mayor on the last occasion to give me my $69,000 I paid for the condominium and the $3,000 for the movie, so that I could move to a place that would be more suitable for my type of personality, my person, and my beliefs. I, last night, for instance, I called the dispatcher, and I said to the dispatcher that I was in very much in need. My eyes were on fire. I was trying to play my cello, couldn't play my cello. There was something being swished around and burning, and it was really terrible. And she said, "I have no police officers to send me. You then are a doctor. You need a doctor, and you need to go to the emergency room now." Well, last month, I was in the emergency room. I was in the hospital for a week with blood clots in the leg that I find suspect. And I would tell you that the cost of the emergency room was $2,000. This dispatcher must not know the expense of medicine in this day and age. These are a few of the instances, and I will run through them rapidly quickly. My electric is being turned on and off, on and off. All my clock has been set by the other reset, etc. And I called U V, and they said my unit was the only unit that was having that problem. I called the police. I called the police. The police came, and both of them said to put a lock on this meter. So I put a lock on the meter, and then it stopped. And the board member and maintenance man, whom I find suspect, were very much objected to my putting that lock on that meter. They said that was not my property, but the police and U V told me to do it. Shocks come through my condo that feel electrical and hurt various parts of my body, especially the head area. I know this is difficult to believe. The ceiling fan in two of my bedrooms, they keep going on and off and turning from one to, in one direction, and then in another. One fell, one of those ceiling fans fell, separating the light from the fan. And I showed it to the police officer. I said, "You know, it's in the middle of my bed. I don't go up in that area." And also feces, of all things, feces is vented across the hall probably, into my bathroom and into my bedroom where I repose. And my record player has been burned up. My C D player, if I get a new C D player, if I get new batteries, they are burned up by some clickings underneath my condominium or across the wall from my condominium. I do not know. My C Ds, which are mostly opera, they don't hear them. They're on a, they're in a wallpan, and they're burned up as well. I let the police officer listen to it, that it's going. And at my kitchen door, across the hall and opposite to the door of suspect, I feel a little like pain in my knees and my leg. This is suspect, as I said, I was hospitalized, for blood clots. My coffee grinder, both of them, have two different types, two different places that I purchased them. Both of them, while grinding coffee, started ticking, 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 again, and both of them have been burned up. These are some, but not all, of the problems I have had. A gentleman of my age, I will be turning in B1, should not be faced with such dangerous problems. If they are using a remote, I looked it up, and it said that a remote can burn a house down. If it can trigger the electric wiring, it could burn the place down. That sounds pretty powerful to me. Then it says in the instructions of the remote, use it only and put it away. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sidwell. Further comments? Same none. We'll close this public portion of the meeting and go on to approval of the minutes of the April 17 meeting.
Approved approval.
Second.
Motion is made in second for approval of the April 17, 2019 meeting minutes. Any comments, suggestions, changes, deletions? Same none, motion paid or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that motion carries. Under announcements, I do have the board, ex officios, that I laid at everyone's desk, so you have that, as to service on various boards and commissions in the city. Also on appointments, I laid at your desk, various appointments to a couple of planning zoning commission personnel and parks and recreation. If we could, maybe we could take them up collectively, or we can take them up separately.
Do we approve it as a slate? Second.
Okay. Let me just read them real quick.
Okay.
For you.
That's fine.
So for planning and zoning, a reappointment of Claude Buckeye from Ward 4, Sonny Costa from Ward 3, Keith Gilling from Ward 1, and Joy Bush, also from Ward 3. Our personnel, Vicki Taylor Edwards from Ward 4, Anna Parks Recreation, Mary Destin Easton, from Ward 2. Any further comments, questions? Those in favor of various appointments to boards and commissions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that motion carries. We are down to the Kiwanis Club Breakfast Proclamation. Councilmember Norris, would you like to go through that with us, or?
If you would like me to read it, I can do that.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. It's under you, that's why I didn't, but I'll go ahead. Proclamation, the city of Bridgeton, whereas the Kiwanis Club of Bridgeton will sponsor their 37th annual civic prayer breakfast on Thursday, May 2, 2019. And whereas, the annual prayer breakfast has become a symbol of the unity which exists in the city of Bridgeton. And whereas, the Kiwanis Club of Bridgeton, chartered in June of 1967, has been a positive factor in the community through its contributions and participation in the programs involving the youth, senior citizens, and our disabled in our community. And whereas, for over 37 years, this event has brought together members of area churches to provide spiritual support for the growth and direction of the city, as well as for its leaders as they face challenges and continued changes in the community. And whereas, members of the Kiwanis Club of Bridgeton have been constant in their commitment and dedication to the development and growth of Bridgeton, providing a wholesome environment in which all citizens can live and work.
Very good. So is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
The motion is approved.
Second.
Motion is made in second for the proclamation's win. Any further comments or questions?
No.
Very good. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, that motion carries. We will have the proclamation presented for the Kiwanis at tomorrow's breakfast meeting. Thank you, councilmember. Item four, election of council officers. Councilmember Hein.
Yes, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to propose electing Jerry Grimmer as council president.
Second. Okay. Motion is made in second for the election of councilmember Jerry Grimmer as president of this council. Are there any further?
Move to close.
Motion is made to close nominations. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Those now in favor, councilmember Grimmer, serving as your next council president, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Congratulations, councilmember Zimmer.
Jerry.
Excuse me. Let's get them right sometimes. All right. Do we have also, don't we have another?
Treasurer.
Treasurer. Someone care to make the motion for treasurer?
Move to place a nomination, Mr. Councilman Randy Hein for council treasurer.
Second.
Motion is made in second for the nomination of councilmember Randy Hein as treasurer of council. Further nominations?
Who's nominations?
Second.
Motion is made in second to close nominations. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. We are now down to the election of the treasurer. Those in favor, councilmember Hein, serving as treasurer of the council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Congratulations, councilmember Hein.
Thank you.
We are now going to recess for a public hearing as advertised on a planned urban development. So, Mr. Greitens, would you like to come forward and address council on this?
Thank you. So this is, this is a request. The request is twofold, for rezoning and, a rezoning to a PUD and a preliminary plan. However, both items were considered by planning person at the meeting, but this evening's council meeting, we're only going to be discussing the rezoning portion of it. The petitioner is McBride Barrow Land Company LLC, and the property is 3416 Fifi Road. So as stated, the request is to reason all the property from R2 to PUD planned single-family residential development, and of course, request preliminary development plan approval. A PUD is a type of planned development allowed in the Bridgeton zoning ordinance. It requires property to be at least two acres in size, and may be requested when a property cannot be established for zoning regulations due to either unusual lot size, configuration, topography, things of this nature. As stated, the preliminary plan portion of the request will be considered at a future council meeting. The, just real quickly, this is the development plan. So the reason for the request to rezon to PUD is for a proposed 30-lot detached single-family residential development. And I just wanted to cover a few items regarding the process itself. So, rezoning to a planned unit development requires a public hearing before the planning commission and notification to adjacent property owners. This public hearing is held on April 8 of this year, and planning commission, of course, reviews the proposal and makes a recommendation to city council. And the city council, another public hearing is held this evening, and then council makes the final determination. And just real quickly, the preliminary plan process, it also requires a public hearing with the planning commission. It doesn't require a public hearing before the city council, but again, that will be considered at a future council meeting. The property itself, it's 6.95 acres in area. It currently has a single-family lot on it up near Fifi Road, and then commercial buildings in the rear that was formerly used as a greenhouse and landscaping company, which has since gone out of business. The remainder of the site is undeveloped, some open green space and wooded areas. The property is currently zoned R2 with, here's one, it's a little more zoomed out. The property to the north, a little bit to the east and west, is also zoned R2. There's a mix of R3 and R4 zoning to the north across from Fifi. As you see in the top left portion, there's a different planned unit development to the northwest, that's Meyer Acres. And then to the adjacent to the west, southwest, is R4 zoning, that's West Haven subdivision. And then to the adjacent property to the east, southeast is zoned B5 and planned commercial. As you can see in the arrow, and we just currently undeveloped. And then some commercial zoning along Lindbergh. The surrounding land uses include a mix of mostly single-family residential along Fifi and subdivisions to the north and west, and then some commercial land uses along Lindbergh Boulevard itself. Next, I want to discuss the, how the project relates to the comprehensive plan. On review of the proposal, the project is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. I just wanted to highlight a few of those items, some of the goals that is consistent with, as stated, provide for housing densities and types that meet market demand, maintain existing neighborhoods, disrevelation of deteriorating areas, and increase covenants to invest in residential properties. And then I also paraphrase some of the objectives, promote high-quality, long-lasting, future single-family residential development, encourage development, higher density residential development. And then just some implementation strategies, provide areas for single-family subdivision development near existing single-family development, promote continuity between residential uses, and accommodate the latest trends in residential development. On review of what the applicant has proposed, it meets a variety of the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, is consistent with that. And I did want to include, this is a screenshot of a portion of, so in the comprehensive plan, there is a future land use map. So I included the screenshot of this area. And as you can see, so the yellow is just labeled as single-family residential, and then the orange is classified as duplex slash attached single-family. So even though this property, as you can see right in the middle, in the property, the adjacent property to the southeast, they were depicted in the 2013 comprehensive plan as duplex slash attached single-family residential. One thing I wanted to point out, and I pointed this out to the planning commission, the future land use map of the comprehensive plan is not intended to serve as a parcel-by-parcel requirement for redevelopment. It's intended to be more of a broad overview and to be viewed with some flexibility. So for example, under the subheading of duplex townhome attached single-family, that this property is classified as, it does state that it includes single-family detached and single-family attached. So this both is an option. So it's not that this parcel is required to be a duplex development or attached single-family. It was just depicted as this, as this might be an area that is where this would be a good fit. One of the questions that came up at planning commission was basically, why was this parcel listed as, as this classification for duplex or attached single-family? And I was not with the city of Bridgeton at the time that the comprehensive plan was drafted, but my assumption is that, as you can see, some of the goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan point to residential redevelopment, including areas that are a good fit for duplex or attached single-family. So I think the planning person at city council probably looked at some areas that larger tracks where this might be a good fit, because maybe there's nearby multifamily or nearby duplex or nearby commercial where you'd want to add a little bit more density. So I think that's probably why this was depicted as such, you have some multifamily to the south and some other PUDs in the area. Under this classification in the comprehensive plan, it states that an appropriate density for this classification is an average minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet per condominium for detached single-family development. And this, the proposed development does not exceed that requirement. It's, they're averaging about 10,000 square feet per lot area when considering the entire development. So there's no issue with inconsistency in terms of lot size and lot area with the comprehensive plan. I do have a few pictures of the site itself from Fifi. This shows on the left-hand side, the dwelling that's on the property. You can see on the right-hand side in the back, that's some of the commercial buildings for the former landscaping company. This is the, it's a circle drive that serves the dwelling. This curve, can you see kind of right in the middle picture? That's approximately where the proposed new street would be located. This just shows a better view of the driveway on the southern end of the property and some of the undeveloped area on the left, and then other view of the house. This kind of shows a better overall view from Buckeye, who was last here, just of the overall site. The, I wanted to mention a few items just related to the PUD regulations in zoning ordinance. So planning development may be permitted on tracks that are unable to meet established zoning regulations. I had a little bit of detail and explanation in the staff report, but just to summarize, under the current R2 new district zoning, practical redevelopment of this parcel would be very difficult to accomplish, partially because of the minimum lot widths, minimum lot sizes, and especially if anyone were to propose a new right-of-way running into it. So the existing dimensions and configuration would very much limit the number of lots, especially when looking at what the comprehensive plan shows for this property. The PUD zoning allows for flexibility that might be necessary to redevelop property when situations like this occur. The PUD actually allows for up to 14 units per acre, at a minimum of 3,000 square feet per lot area. The current proposal is 4.3 units per acre. The density is 4.3 with an average lot size of 6,000 square feet. And as I mentioned before, 10,000 square feet when considering the overall size of the property. Just a brief review in terms of consistency with surrounding densities. I did take a look at specifically the subdivision to the south, which is zoned R4. Subdivision to the south was developed at approximately 4.1 units per acre. So it's very similar to this proposal. Now, if you take into consideration some of the four-family buildings that are closer to Lindbergh, east of West Haven, the density for that overall development is on the tire, it's closer to six. But the single-family portion is about 4.1. And then I've had, well, this map shows it to the upper left, Meyer acre, a PUD that was approved a little over 10 years ago, and is now finished. That was about at about 4.1 units per acre. So it's a similar density to this surrounding development and with other PUD developments. And then, I did want to mention that at planning commission meeting, the planning commission recommended approval by a vote of 70-0. Just wanted to briefly mention a few items. There were some members of the public that spoke, reflected in the draft minutes that were included in the report. The neighbor to the west had a kind of an antenachow area, spoke, had a couple of concerns about some of the proposed infrastructure, retaining walls. The neighbor to the north addressed planning commission, and she had some concerns about potential trespassing on her property to the north of the site. And there was a question about setbacks from Fifi, and that under the R2 zoning, you know, currently, some of a lot of the houses are setback 60, 65 feet from Fifi. And one of the things that I pointed out at the planning commission meeting was, through a PUD rezoning, it's establishing a new set of setbacks and a new set of lot sizes. So the setbacks in R2, R4, wherever they be, don't apply, it was establishing a new set of setbacks for this development. And then, one of the other items, and this is in the step for all, so through a PUD rezoning, city council does have the authority to grant variances from the ordinance, and one of them that came up, so in the subdivision regulations, any new right-of-way that is going to access a collector road, which Fifi is, is required to either be located directly across from existing street or no less than 300 feet from the nearest intersecting street. Well, to the northeast is Oak Hill Manor Drive, and that is 280 feet from, approximately 280 feet from the proposed right-of-way intersection that the applicant is proposing. And we reviewed, staff reviewed this and made a recommendation that it would be reasonable for council to approve this variance, specifically because Oak Hill Manor, I believe, is 25 lots, and it's not a three-street, so only 25 single-family lots access this road. So by improving a reduction of approximately 20 feet, that this would not cause any major negative impact on traffic. So that was also included, also in the draft ordinance. And that's all I have. I know the petitioner has other slides of the development, but I do have the same ones that were included in the packet, if anyone were to refer to them.
That all?
Yes.
Councilor, any questions, Mr. Greitens? Councilmember Satell?
Yes, you said that they can create any kind of setbacks they want once this is approved?
Well, the setbacks would be approved through the process itself.
This process or the preliminary plan process?
It's really a combination of both. Ultimately, through the rezoning process is where the setbacks established, and then it's reflected on whatever, you know, the subdivision plan.
So if we wish to have a minimum setback on a particular area, we need to make sure it's included in this particular process tonight?
Well, the...
Such as R2 zoning setbacks on Fifi Road?
If the attorney can help you out. Sure.
Well, you know, unless you're in vote tonight, it wouldn't be established tonight. But yes, this bill, between this bill and the preliminary plan, I mean, you'd address it in both places.
In both places, not just the preliminary plan process? All right.
That's right. They go, they go hand in hand. The plan, the PUD is tied to that plan.
All right. Thank you.
Further comments or questions, Mr. Greitens? Same none. Thank you, Zach. With the petitioner, would you like to come forward? Please give us your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Catherine Moore. My address is 16091 Swingly Ridge Road, Street 3, Line Ridge, Westerfield, Missouri, 63017. And I'm here on behalf of McBride Barrow Land Company. Oh, great, thank you. Oh, great, thanks, Zach. My presentation is over now. We're excited to be back in Bridgeton. It's been quite a while since McBride has built new homes here, so hopefully we can get the council excited about this project as well. This project will be a joint venture between McBride Homes and Vera Construction, both industry leaders from the area. And I'm sure several of you are familiar with McBride Homes, but for those who are new here, we're not. We're the largest home builder in the state and we're the largest union builder in the nation. We've been in business for over 73 years and we build quality neighborhoods and communities all over the metropolitan area. Your city planner, Zach, gave a very thorough staff presentation, so I'll do my best to kind of abbreviate mine and not be duplicative, but we'll see how that goes. Before you is the project site and it is 6.95 acres off Fifi Road, as Zach mentioned. We have the site under contract currently. And tonight, I brought other McBride team members here with me, so hopefully between the group of us, we'll be able to answer any questions you may have. Chris Kessler, project manager, Aaron Wynnholdts, vice president of our sales department, and then also Mike Verding of the Sterling Company. So, hopefully we can cover all bases with you. As Zach mentioned, this site is a landscaping greenhouse company and that's been abandoned, out of business. It's well-suited for redevelopment, as the site's currently in poor condition. We are, Zach already went through the zoning issues, how this is surrounded on three sides, by residential and commercial on one side, with various residential zoning districts in the area. Here are some pictures of the site in its current condition. And as Zach also mentioned, we are consistent with the comprehensive plan for the Arbor Gardens project. This project proposes only single-family detached residential land uses, which are permitted land uses under future land use map and far less dense than the duplexes or townhome uses that were also potentially slated for this property. Here is an aerial with our site plan overlay, just to give you an overarching view of the residential nature of the area and how this project will be cohesive and consistent with what's already there. The Arbor Gardens project plan features 30 detached single-family homes accessed from a new road from Fifi. We are planning a 10-foot landscape buffer along Fifi Road. New sidewalks, the new streets are being stuffed for potential connectivity to the undeveloped property that's adjacent to it. There will be a substantial amount of common ground, green space, attractive monuments, signage, and this project would help redevelop an underutilized property in the city. PUD zoning is appropriate here due to the efficient design, the provision of common ground, the modern attractive new home products we will be bringing to the city of Bridgeton, and this couldn't be accomplished through R2 zoning and a straight R2 district. Zach already mentioned that we're only seeking one variance from the code, which is permitted by PUD zoning. And that, that 20-foot variance from the 300-foot spacing of roads requirement, we're requesting 280 feet. That's to keep pretty uniform lot sizes on the lots we have planned and also to avoid existing utilities. And again, here is a more zoomed-in project overlay of the aerial photo showing you the green space and the access and how the new streets are stuffed. The single-family home products we hope to build in Arbor Gardens project are McBride's popular base side series. Again, all single-family detached, two-car garages, fully sitting yards, all come with landscape passages. We offer a variety of elevations, which have all been submitted to the city, many of which offer stone and brick accents. These homes will be consistent with what's working in the area and, as Zach already mentioned, consistent with other density in the area as well. And again, we'll fulfill the comprehensive plan goal of offering new, modern housing options to the city. And you've got the drawing elevations, hopefully in your packet. So, here are some photographs of some of the homes that we would like to build from our base side product series. And prior to meeting with your planning and zoning commission the other week, we invited the adjacent property owners to a neighborhood meeting. McBride does that as a matter of course when we're building new residential developments next to existing residential, so that way no one's surprised when we come into town and we submit an application or have a public hearing. Our neighborhood meeting went well. There were no objections to our product types. Once they became aware of the comprehensive plan, they said they much preferred the single-family detached homes to duplexes or townhomes that could be built here. And again, they were pleased with the products that we were offering. There was some concerns by the neighbor to the north, which is Ms. Gibson, who's present. She did express her properties adjacent to lots 1 to 13. She's got a very deep, large lot. And she did express concern that if people entered her property, she could have some liability issues. And I understand where she's coming from. I mean, this would be a new development on property adjacent to her, but if anyone entered her property, that's a trespass, that's a law enforcement issue, that's a zoning issue. And typically, when we build residential next to commercial uses, intense commercial uses or industrial uses, we're asked to put up some sort of buffer because those are incompatible uses. But typically, we don't see that when you're putting residential next to residential. And that's because many of our homeowners build fences aftermarket. So, after they purchase their home from McBride, they'll go in and get a permit and put a fence in for their dogs, for their kids to play in. And so, if we put any sort of perimeter fencing up, the aesthetics for the area can get messed, messed up, for lack of a better word. It doesn't look as nice as it does when our homeowners are able to pick their fencing and connect to their neighbor's fencing when you have some sort of large perimeter fence up. So, that's our position on that issue. While we do understand her concerns, we would say that that's law enforcement matter and that is zoning matter. There's also some discussion about setbacks and we reviewed the setback issue with your city planner and city staff and understood that when you go through the PUD process, like we do in other cities for other projects, it's the setbacks that are on the approved plan, the companies, the zoning ordinance, that dictate what those setbacks will be. So, that's part of the PUD process and that's why the flexibility for PUD zoning is sought for brand-new, single-family residential developments in areas that are already developed. Your staff's reports indicated that this project meets a criteria for approval under the city code. And we agree that the Arbor Gardens project does meet the city code and the comprehensive plan criteria for approval. And we did get unanimous approval from the planning and zoning commission when we were here the other week. And so, we're seeking your review, we're hopefully seeking your approval, and we are really looking forward to this project. We think it would be a good one. And we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Sorry, somebody's outside. Next, we'll come to the judge to see what it is. Questions from council, councilor O'Neal?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You mentioned a 10-foot landscape buffer along Fifi Road?
Yes.
Is that included in the 20-foot setback or is that separate?
No, that's included. There's, you know, the right-of-way, there's sidewalk, then there's a 10-foot, I guess, I guess this would be the only picture I have, which isn't a very good one immediately, but the landscape plan was included and the plans still be submitted. So, it's 10-foot landscape after the right-of-way, after the sidewalk, and then we have the five-yard setback on the lot and then the building.
So, the side yard of those two houses up there along Fifi would only be 10 feet wide, basically?
No, the side yard's five foot, which is then adjacent to a 10-foot landscape buffer, which is then adjacent to the sidewalk and right-of-way.
Right, okay.
So, there's quite a bit of distance there.
Done?
Yes.
Councilmember Winner?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
These little temporary turnarounds that you've got here, what are they? I haven't seen those before.
Chris, Chris Keller or Mike Verding of the Sterling Company, our engineering firm on this project, might be better to address that, but I, as I was told, they were accounting department, but Mike, if that didn't-
I think I understand what they are, but they're going to remain or they, the reason is temporary is what I'm-
They're considered temporary because in the future that those streets can be extended into the adjacent parcel. So, instead of building full cul-de-sac, those, those types of temporary turnarounds are allowable just for that, that is a temporary basis, but then they'll be removed as the street gets extended into the neighboring parcel.
Okay, good, thank you. That's good. I also have some questions. Will you offer any options? What type of options will you offer on your house? And for instance, energy package upgrades, you know, things like that? Will you offer a part of your package or what?
Well, our homes come with, you know, low E windows, appliances, there's all kinds of upgrades. McBride just this past year debuted our design center, which is in Chesterfield. We're the only local home builder to have a full, large-scale design center where after a customer purchases a new home from McBride, they then have a series of appointments with design consultants where every option on the exterior and on the interior is chosen at that time and they have provided a few options. And Aaron Wynnholdts is here on behalf of our sales team and he might be able to elaborate if you have any specific questions.
Well, no, just that there would be some options to upgrade. And what I'm looking for is to put as much quality into the subdivision as we can and make sure that it's available to the possible customers, because I think people are looking for that now.
And people offer that, but Aaron, you can elaborate.
Yes, good evening, Aaron Wynnholdts of McBride Sun Homes. As Catherine said, we have opened, it's an award-winning design studio. We've been recognized nationally this year at the awards in Las Vegas. So, the state of the art, we do offer all kinds of options and investment opportunities for customers to choose and personalize their homes as they see fit with their investments. So, we've got all kinds of exterior options, we've got all kinds of interior options. We're also always looking at the newest design trend and bringing this into a central rotation for our customers. So, it really is an opportunity for that to personalize around the flooring, the lighting, the cabinets, the hammer pops, the exteriors, feminine bricks, shingles, that area.
Okay, good. Any customization, and I realize that, I don't know if you're working off just regular stock plans, but let's say that somebody wanted a garage pushed out two foot or anything like that?
No, we have standard options and opportunities for that. So, we do offer a two-foot extension on all of our garages for all of our clients, but we do have limitations to that.
Well, I understand that.
Yes, it's reasons, councilmember Winner, we need to keep it focused on the plan under development after getting into development, other deals, designs, or anything like that.
Okay, and then one final comment. I do share, this is a Gibson's side of his concern about the border, that northern border with the fencing. I could understand, you know, one or two lots, which put in 13 lots stacked up there and I think some people, most people would probably put some sort of fencing back there, but there may be some that, that wouldn't. And I understand what happens in backyards, they start doing, you know, stacks of firewood and all kinds of stuff and then you've got dogs and kids running over there. And I just think that that's a pretty strict imposition on the homeowner. I understand the issue about fencing and so forth, but maybe if we had a fencing allowance to make sure that there was a fence that went in there somehow, that could alleviate a lot of the problems. But I think stacking 13 lots adjoining your property is just, creates a hardship, creates a situation that, and I realize it's not strictly the zoning issue, but it's kind of the right thing to do, I think. So, I'm going to maybe have some input on that or I have some concerns there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fench?
Thanks, sir. I guess I heard part of my answer just a minute ago, but your homes that are going to be built, do they have to go to D and R board to get the models and that approved? Or is there, we're not giving approval on any homes, are we, the models and so forth?
No, so-
They don't have to go to, okay, so they can all-
Well, they do go to the designer review, correct? Yes, they'll go to designer-
They do go to designer review board and that's where, and also, that's what I was just wondering, tonight, we're not, nothing to do with the models of the homes, because I had a question regarding, that I didn't see any three-car garages in there, so that's not part of the plan, but that's something you can deal with later. But I like the idea of your turnaround area. I think that's something that I never heard be in the past because it's usually a cul-de-sac. And turnaround area looks like it's going to be much better for our public works crew to be able to provide the best snow removal in St. Louis County for those residents. So, I like that idea. But I also just was wondering about the approval of homes, so if they go there and then everything else that goes in the home, I think can all be obtained through your upgrades and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Center?
I'd like to go back to the issue on the roads, a couple items. One, the turnaround, the drawing shows one of the driveways as being the temporary turnaround as well. Does that, so you have to use the person's other driveway to turn around to get, go out of the turnaround? Is that true? So, it's the one drawing you're showing up here doesn't show that a number, lot 13 and lot 15 have been here?
It would be a temporary easement until those roads are extended by access to the adjacent parcel, is my understanding of it. That's how St. Louis County has been doing those when there's connectivity stuffs.
Okay, so that brings up the next question. Do you have some kind of contract or something on this other property or is this just a wish that maybe someday that it will go through?
We do not have the other property under contracts. In fact, I believe the owners of that site are here, yeah. They've expressed a desire to sell in the near future. I don't know if that would be to McBride or someone else, but just good planning and provide for vacant property to have access.
But this temporary plan could last for 10 or 20 years until somebody buys it, puts road, if they even put roads in it, may go to a, it's a zone for business, it could be business back there.
Yeah.
So, so to me, it seems like you have these two roads that are just in the middle of nowhere and you're, you're turning around and people's front lawn, so are in their driveway, so it just doesn't, it doesn't seem planned out well. It should have been, in my, my eyes, it should have went around and been a cul-de-sac or a circle.
And we, and I understand, I understand that, that that would make sense, but since the comprehensive future land use map calls for residential land uses on this site for just for prudent planning, it would seem that they'd want to connect from these new roads, which are residential in nature. And that's why it was planned this way and just after discussing it, you know, the people smarter than me in the room, the engineers, but we would have to record those easements on those lots and that would be a marketing issue. But we have seen where a temporary cul-de-sac is installed in 10 years down the road when the stuff goes to be connected to the adjacent property, the homeowners get extremely upset and angry because they had 10 years on a cul-de-sac and they, you know, when you finally connect it, this leaves the expectation there for future connectivity that's visible to all.
Okay. Next question is the width of the road, 26-foot and I, somebody, I didn't see it here, somebody said at the planning and zoning, they were requesting one side of parking or to reduce the congestion since you only have two cars that can fit in the driveway barely. You can, so you're, you know, if you have guests over, you're not going to have too much room, or kids, you're not going to have much room for parking.
26-foot wide with parking on one side of the street is pretty much universally standard on everything we've been doing and that's why that was also a thing here.
Okay.
It's St. Louis County standards.
And I do, one other item, I do have issues with the setback on Fifi. I, I think we need more of a setback. I'm okay with the 20-foot setback, but the setback that we're getting, this 15-foot, you're, you know, the five-foot, 10-foot and the sidewalk, it just doesn't, you know, for the, the character of the neighborhood, it's just not matching up for me to where it seems like it's meeting the character of the neighborhood. So, that's, so go ahead, councilor.
And I, and I understand that that's been brought up, but I would counter with it that properties you saw from the photos is not in the greatest condition, it's not being used for consistent use for the residential uses in the area and the new homes and new landscaping and new trees to improve the area aesthetics more than an additional setback that would just be a side yard.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Stell?
Yes, I would imagine a comprehensive plan that Holt over you talked about-
Yes, I would imagine a comprehensive plan that Lindholtz, who you talked about, changing this from R2 zoning to a PUD. Probably wasn't, back in, was 2013 or 14, wasn't planning on knocking down the house that you're planning on knocking down. It's a pretty nice, one of the nicer homes on that stretch of P P Road. It has the setback that's at least 40 feet, which is the minimum for R2. 50 feet on R1, like over on Smiley, but this is R2, and many of them are 60 to 65 feet. You've chosen a particular plan that does knock the house down, and maybe squeeze a few more lots in, and maybe the condition of the home has been deteriorated since it's been a rental home for the last couple of years, I know. You know, Mr. Al died quite a few years ago in his 90s. But, you know, I like that you're putting it right where the other sidewalks at. I like the idea of you developing something, because it is a need of some development. But I think that the property, the setbacks that should be on P P Road needs to maintain the character of this whole stretch. You saw the zoning on everything on P P Road and that stretch is all R2 zoning. I don't think that you should be punished to make those front two lots R2 zoning, which is what we did across the street. That would require 20,000 square foot lots. If you add up lots 1, 2, and 3, that doesn't even equal 20,000. You actually have to burn three lots to make that an R2 zoning. I mean, I understand your design there. Same thing would happen over on 2930, and maybe even 28 right there, okay? But I think you can, I've talked to a few of your people in the past. You know, I think it can be done by just combining lots 1 and 2, and maybe to at least keep the R2 zoning requirement setback, which is 40 feet right now off the sidewalk. You will lose one lot on each side. I think that's a very appropriate way to create this plan and make it move forward in a positive direction. If that's not what you would approve to do that, then it's an equal idea. And instead of just a 10-foot landscape, make it a 50-foot landscape, which does the exact same thing. You know, so you have a landscape area where you can create a berm. And I've seen a lot of other subdivisions out, you said your office is out in Chesterfield. I have quite a few homes out there. But I can just imagine, today I was out in Forest Hills Country Club. I can just imagine trying to put these on some of those large 1-acre lots. See, we're gonna take out five lots, so they overlook the golf course over there. And so, if this is part of the process in tonight's and two weeks from now, that, you know, how many lots this is gonna have, you know, or that you're gonna have some particular setbacks that need to be part of this, I think we need to discuss that tonight and two weeks from now, when it's the second reading. You know, I'd like to see if you add some kind of ways to create an option to, you know, combine those front two and say, okay, maybe those front two houses could even face P P Road now. Maybe they can't, because it'd be nice if they could face and put out those two houses that have a side entry garage and really have a nice character of the street and the neighborhood, but the other houses, you know, in consideration. Instead of it kind of just being a locked-in gated community with landscape buffers where you don't see nothing there, which is kind of what this landscape buffer is. But if you look at some of the sidewalks down the street, where they did put a house sideways, now they've got 10-foot trees growing there, growing over the top of the sidewalk. I'll show you when we actually have to come up in a couple of weeks from now. But it'd be nice if you could create a possible option where it didn't show this in your plan, urban development, to have a little extra setback. Even if you had to change some of your other stuff in the subdivision. I don't know what you have to change, you know, to make that happen, but I think it's possible. Thank you.
You've not come up, otherwise we'll go on. That's all right, go on. Any further comments or questions from council? Saying none. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll take comments from the product. And I do have a card here from Linda Blackburn Van der Plon, did I pronounce it right? We've got your address, Miss Van der Plon, so you're good.
I'm Ms. Linda Van der Plon, and we're at 301 and 303 Lambert Boulevard. I do have, I have seven of the pages of what I'm just gonna briefly discuss. If I only have seven, just want me to pass them out now?
You can just leave them up here at the clerk, and then we'll make sure the council gets them all. Thank you.
There is no, like they say, there is for those stuff to come on further. There is, we have no contract or anything with them. We're very far away in pricing. So, what I'm saying is what we feel is the best. And our concerns are in regards to that first meeting that we had where they talked about the water. We're worried about the, that right now is just all grass, and that's a lot of houses to be put in one little area. But we're not opposed to the project. Our only concern is in regards to retention time and water coming off onto our property. So, you know, I've spoken to M S D, I've spoken to everybody in regards to this, and apparently they're probably held to the high end regards for all that. And I think maybe what you might think, this is not for selling their rezonies, it's my feelings from living up here for 40 years. I think you're losing sight of the fact that these, she didn't mention the price. They're over $200,000 for these homes. This is gonna be a very large upgrade to this area, and it's well-needed. I'm surprised they're doing it like this. But, you know, I would never move into a house that's that close to another person where I couldn't park in front of it. I've got teenagers that there's not enough room for me to live there. But I do feel that it's a good problem, and we're not opposed to it by any means. But we just have concerns regarding the water runoff.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate you coming on and expressing your concerns. Further comments or questions from anybody in the audience? Anyone else care to come further and stress yea or nay on this particular project? Going once, twice? We will close this public hearing and move on to, we rejoin the regular agenda for tonight's meeting, which will on item six, Councilmember Grimmer.
Yes, move for second reading, second, final reading for consideration for a liquor license for Walmart. This would be a package liquor license and a Sunday package liquor license.
Second. Motion's made second, and to approve a package liquor license for Walmart at 11-900 St. Charles Rock Road. Councilmember Grimmer?
Okay, all right. Move approval for a package liquor license and Sunday liquor license for Walmart at 11-900 St. Charles Rock Road. The reason for this application is there is a new managing officer. The application is in order, including has received a background check on the applicant, which was basically revealed no issues and so forth. So, accordingly, again, rather than changes, to change a managing officer, everything in order, I would approve on that basis.
Further comments or questions from council? Saying none, Senator Paul Wilk.
Mr. Fetch?
Hi.
Mr. Grimmer?
Hi.
Mr. Hine?
Hi.
Mrs. Norris?
Hi.
Mr. Satell?
Hi.
Mr. Zimmer?
Hi.
Mrs. Abrams?
Hi.
By your vote of seven to nothing, you've approved the package liquor license for the Walmart store at 11-900, just basically managing officer change. Councilmember Grimmer, item seven?
Okay, another liquor license approval here. Move for second reading for approval or application for Loving and Marino TVA is It's Dune Somewhere, that's at 12334 Natural Bridge Road.
Second. Motion's made second, and for final consideration of the full liquor and Sunday license for Loving and Marino LLC at 12-334 Natural Bridge Road. Councilmember Grimmer?
Okay, this is a new applicant moving into a former, the chances are, entertainment facility. The application, again, seems to be in order, including a background check on the applicant, which revealed no issues. I see no issues with this whatsoever as far as the applicant or the application itself. Accordingly, I would recommend approval of this liquor license.
Further comments or questions from council? Saying none, Senator Paul Wilk.
Mr. Grimmer?
Hi.
Mr. Hine?
Hi.
Mrs. Norris?
Hi.
Mr. Satell?
Hi.
Mr. Zimmer?
Hi.
Mrs. Abrams?
Hi.
Hi.
By your vote of seven to nothing, you've approved a full liquor and Sunday license for Loving and Marino LLC doing business as it's named somewhere at 12-334 Natural Bridge Road. Item eight, Councilmember Abrams?
Move for first reading of Bill 6203.
Second.
Motion's made second, and for first reading of Bill 6203, Councilmember Abrams?
In arrears of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number 19-PZ-02 to rezone approximately 6.95 acres of land located at 3416 P P Road from R2 single-family dwelling district to PUD and single-family residential unit development to allow for a 30-lot detached, single-family development. Move table.
Second.
Motion's made second, and table, Bill 6203, those favor sign if I say no. All right, opposed, detaining, motion is tabled. Let's see you all for the next council meeting. Discussion items, Councilmember Fetch, streets?
I have nothing, sir, I don't know if anyone else does.
Do you want the council to have any issues on streets? Councilmember Satell?
Yes, not really addressing the streets, we just kept finishing up the discussion on P P. But we had that issue on the speeding and stuff like that. And I was wondering if we're gonna get any kind of more additional updates tonight about that.
The police chief will have it in his report.
I noticed also that, you know, we talked about the issues on, not just the speeding, but on some of them in West Haven, we have the tall grass on some of our streets right now, too, going out. And maybe we can address that as far as, you know, as we do that on the streets, we see them from the streets, how that's processed and do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zimmer?
Now, this is just a little bit of an add-on to what Bob was talking about. We're really pleased to see the traffic enforcement on the Harmon Estates and Smiley. I'd like to see more enforcement in West Haven, though, chief, in that subdivision. I've had, when I walk door-to-door every, every two years, and even recently, we're getting complaint after complaint about fast traffic, and it just doesn't stop. Every, at least one out of three people I talk to have issues with the traffic. I mean, not only on Whitehall Manor, but all the side streets and going down. There is a definite speeding issue, and I would hope that we could go do some enforcement there as well. And maybe that, you know, I know there's been talk about steep speed humps and speed bumps, and maybe that's a secondary thing. But personally, I think the enforcement was possibly slowed down where we don't have to spend the money on the, bettering the streets in that way. I don't know, but, you know, we can always, we can see where we go from there, and then look for the other options. But, yeah, I'd really, really like to see more in that area. So, and then I'm glad to hear you're gonna give a status of what you're thinking about for the rest, you know, the major plan for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Abrams?
Yeah, for remark two on the speeding issues, but I'll wait to council communications to cover that.
Very good. Councilmember Satell?
Yeah, no issue on that. This morning, I was kind of looking at when I was talking about the tall grass, but I noticed that a lot of streets in West Haven, some of them have a speed limit sign at each end. Some of them only have one at one end. And there's one street, I think it's Saxon Hall, doesn't have a speed limit sign. So, is there really a speed limit on that street if it doesn't have a sign at either end? And so, I'm just wondering, maybe Donnie can address that. At least, I think we should at minimum have one at each end of the street when you enter a street, so, thank you.
That'll address, thank you. Further comments, questions? Saying none, we'll move on to the attorney's report?
Nothing at this time, sir, thank you.
Very good. Council communications, Councilmember Norris?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to remind you what for, of what we have in our May 8th, next Wednesday, at Bridgeton School, 7:00 a.m., our local meeting. Again, Kiwanis prayer breakfast is tomorrow. And I am also pleased to see the patrol is slowing the speeders down, but I guess that will have to be a 24/7. I said, Jim, again, as I repeated from last time, people just don't pay the bills anymore. If they can get away with it, you know, that's what they're gonna do. But I think it seemed the police, maybe the lights flashing, maybe that will stop them for a while. Thanks.
Very good. Councilmember Abrams?
Yes, speeding on Harmon Estates Drive, the issuing of the tickets and the warnings they're giving has worked wonders. When I left to come up here tonight to the council meeting, they were, there was three cars traffic just following along down Harmon Estates Drive. So, it's a great job being done on there, and I appreciate it. I want to thank the police department for doing that.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Hine?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say that I'll miss my former board and commission members on the special events and beautification commissions. They're a pleasure to work with, looking forward to my two new assignments. I do want to thank the council and the mayor, and let you know that it's been an honor to serve as council president the past year, and I look forward to serving as treasurer this next year. I put something on everybody's desk before the meeting started. Mr. Purcell and I took a tour of the BioLife facility out in O'Fallon yesterday, and I just wanted to let know my thoughts and comments of what we saw. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Fetch?
Yes, sir. One thing I'd like to do, that maybe I should have done it on the streets, was that our ward meeting was brought up that there was water on the street, running down the street on Benedetta, right at the service road in Benedetta. And I don't know if Randy went by and looked at it, but I know I've looked at it a couple of times. It seems like you can never get it to dry up right now with the rainy season. And I believe it's probably from a sump pump, is probably what is causing that problem. But if you could have somebody from Public Works look at that, make sure, because I didn't see no running water when I came by there today. Another thing, at the senior citizen meeting, coordinating meeting last week, they announced that the senior volunteer recognition luncheon is going to be May the 22nd at the rec center, beginning at 1:00 p.m. Serving will start at 1:30. That's a new date, it's pulled up about a month, because last year, if you remember, was the first year we had it at the rec center, and they were concerned that there could have been a conflict if it was a rainy day, because they had the youth program. So, for that particular reason, they're moving it up this year, and their youth program won't have started yet. So, mark that on your calendar, May the 22nd, rec center, 1:00 p.m. Music starts, 1:30 service start. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grimmer?
Yes, I'd like to thank the council again for my election as council president. Also, I will miss my service to the police and historical commissions. I have great deal, I've learned a great deal from just observing what they do and have a new perspective on what they do. And it's quite impressive, but I'm also looking forward to personalizing streets and learning even more. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Satell?
Yes, pretty well, we beat the street issue to death already, so I'll let them speak about that later. But I did want to also thank you for getting on the historical commission. It's one I haven't been on yet. I do happen to live in an older house. It's not 100 years old yet, but it might be by the time I finish up with the historical commission. But we do have other historical houses in Bridgeton that, you know, I have brought up and talked about. Like down at the U3 House down there by the edge of Maryland Heights in front of the Matthews Park. And so, I think we can continue to do what it takes on our historical and go forward. It's something I know my wife likes to participate with, too, so maybe I have something I can do together with her. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Zimmer?
Yes, I just want to talk about the pension meeting we had last night. We did, we're working on an investment policy statement right now, and that'll be brought, after it's finalized, which is closed, it'll be brought to the council, to be approved by you, by the council. So, they're close on that. What this investment policy statement has is just the procedures of how we're working the committee. So, that'll be handed over to, I'm sorry?
Councilmember Fetch?
Fetch, okay, so you'll be involved with that coming up. And then we also had the actuarial evaluation report given last night. He went into great detail of talking about that. I think all of you have got the report, be worth looking through. I'm still digesting it. I think everybody took a hit on, with their IRAs and their stock and everything last year, and I think we did, too, a little bit. But it looks like from the report he has, it's coming back, and I think it'll come back and we'll do well. It's worth looking at, and just to bring it back to our class we had from earlier. So, it's good to go through and review it. That's all I had. Thanks.
Very good. I would encourage all council members to review that. It is kind of an important document to look at. On to the department reports. Chief, you want to go over what we're doing on the reports of speeding throughout the city? The action is working now?
Sure. We've been very effective with Harmon Estates from 16 until 30. There's been 11,877 hits on the machine now. That could be the same vehicle, could be any vehicle that traveled on the roadway. The average speed now is 21.4 miles an hour, the 85th percentile is 25. The 10 mile an hour pace speed is at 17. So, we have dramatically reduced the speed on that road. The data that we've collected from the stationary improvements on The data that we collected from the stationary reviewments on Terry from the 1st through the 30th of April, traveling in both directions, there were 8,050 hits, the average speed on that roadway was 22.35 miles an hour, the 70th percentile is 26, and the 85th percentile is only 28, so we're doing very well with that street and that sign. We didn't fare so well in the park zone on TP, from the 1st through the 30th, we had 19,800 vehicles go through, and the average speed there is 24.36, the 85th percentile is 31, so we're going to increase enforcement areas or activity in that area. Just a reminder, especially since we have the camp getting ready to set up, so we'll make our presence known there very quickly, especially during the daytime, which is when most of these violations are occurring. The next step is to finish up in Harmon Estates, but we are going to move the speed trail down on Whitehall. Soon as we get enough data on Whitehall, we're going to go to Old St. Charles, then we'll go to Benedetta, then we'll go to Smiley and Harmony and collect data from there. We've already actively started the speeding on Whitehall and Smiley. We will do the very same thing, when the guys are not busy, we're going to focus in these areas, and we're going to get that speed slowed down. The best way to approach this is through selective enforcement and issue enough substances so that we can modify the behavior of the drivers. From the data that we've been collecting so far, the stationary signs do work, they average about $3,100 apiece, and we will try to find some money to, some funding to get at least two more and get them in place, probably within the next 60 to 90 days. That way, we can have additional information by the one or per one at the, at the high rated areas, and we can make that decision from the information that we get from the whole trail. We suspect Whitehall and Smiley will be our next problem in that period.
Very good. Councilmember Satil, on this subject?
Yes, it is, sir. Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm glad we finally heard how much those signs, permanent ones, you said $3,100, is that correct, for the two we have, it's about what they cost? Do they, do they work for both directions or just only one direction?
Well, there's only one antenna, it'll catch a car going away and it'll also catch a car coming at you.
Okay, so it'll get one leaving even if it's speeding, and they just won't tell it what they, what they actually read then, okay. The other issue, I've had some people ask, can they be sponsored or somehow, where we, you know, people invest into this and then they're there, and then the city take them over, so I'm just wondering if that's something we can look at or not, so, I mean, you know, it was particularly brought up on TP Road and a couple of locations even in West Haven, so let me know how much this is going to cost, I don't mind contributing with some of my neighbors and getting one, so, just throwing it out there, if that's possible, or maybe you don't even want to involve, you know, anybody else on this, so, but I just wanted to throw it up, I know we know what the cost is, so, I didn't know whether it's $10,000 or, you know, or what, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zimmer.
Chief, I was wondering if you had any discussions on the speed humps or what your, or speed bumps humps and all, something like that, different types of construction, if you had conversations and what do you think about that, you know, what are your thoughts or where are you, where are you steering on that at all?
You know, I am not a fan of any obstruction in the roadway, especially when it comes to maintenance or emergency vehicles. I've had to drive over speed bumps at high rate of speed, and we've had very, very serious calls, it's tough on the vehicles and it's tough on the driver, so I would, I would not be in favor of any type of speed bump in the roadway at this time. You know, we've had officer in need of aid calls, and it's hard enough to focus on getting from point A to point B without unnecessary destruction in the road. I think selective enforcement has proven to work, and we approach it from that now. I am not opposed to looking at other things, if this doesn't work, I mean, this is all a learning experience for all of us, and technology changes every day, so I would not be close-minded in any initiative or form and look at all different types of technology.
Thank you.
Good. Councilmember A.
I have a question for Dave. Are we allowed to take money, like to buy speed signs from residents and that?
People, people can make donations to the city, it's happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, city can accept donations.
And if they do that, then what if we move it to another area, then they're going to say, hey, that is mine.
Yeah, my recommendation would be the city not place restrictions on the money that's received that way, unless you wanted to put it into a fund for a particular purpose, but in terms of being restricted on where you put those improvements, you know, if you do agree to the, you know, you can do it, but then you're going to be tied into what they've, what they've given for that purpose, so, the more you restrict your flexibility, the less you're going to move things around.
Right, because that's what I was concerned with, you know, if you move it somewhere else and they're going to say, hey, you know, my money went into buying that for this street, and so, I just had a question, whether we could take private money or...
Well, we can, I mean, you know, we took, I mean, the biggest example of that that I can think of is the Carroll property was donated, that property was donated, and so we could take cash as well, and we have, but...
The Senior Van.
O'Fallon's Wheels.
The Senior Van.
Yeah. So, you know, I think the key to that, if you were going to do that, is being very clear on what the, what the rules are around the donation, what will be done with it, so there's no real confusion on the part of the city or the donor.
Because it could cause problems for us, so, that's why I was asking, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Gunn, streets, public records.
It is fall grass time, we sent our first list out to all councils yesterday, currently have two pages of addresses, and this early on in the season, it could be a long summer for us, we're tracking over 45 homes right now, we treat everybody the same, for instance, we did have to post the old City Hall property, which is the National Guard, they all speed up their grass, so they got posted today, and they're going to send it out, so, we're going to probably be mowing my grass this summer, we are now in the grass cutting business, we're going to encourage everyone to cut their own grass.
What is the cost when the city encourages that?
It's not only the cost, it has to be mowing, we also have to put two hours of our own city time onto that, so you're going to have $400 per mowing, so I would encourage you to hire maybe a local teenager and help cut the grass, $50 will be a lot more economic.
Thank you. Further questions, Mr. Gunn. Mr. Kane, apartment structure.
Wanted to provide an update on a hot water heater issue we had last week on Thursday, so we notified that there was a hot water in the building, we had a repair man company come up on Thursday to take a look at it, and they tried to overnight a park, we had to have a park ship to fix it, a gas valve replacement, and unfortunately, they didn't get DOR in time to get it overnighted, so we didn't get it until, until Monday, so we had four days, but we did not have hot water, it was not ideal, so, I do apologize that you all had to take a lukewarm shower, it's not, not fun, not ideal after, after a workout, but it is, it was fixed as of Monday, we're getting out.
Good. Chief, did you have something?
Yes, I forgot the tension, and on Saturday, we will be attending the law enforcement memorial in Jefferson City in 20 to 23 hours, our fallen officers, and this morning, we had a packed house for the business lunch meeting, we did active shooter training, and AT&T and Goodwill had a huge presence there, and a suggestion was made to cancel July's meeting, because it would be July the 3rd, and most of those folks would not be able to attend, so I would ask for your input on that.
I think it's probably a pretty good idea.
Then we'll get it posted.
Yep. Further comments or questions, Mr. Gunn.
I have nothing at this time, sir.
Very good. Couple of things really quick, we have at the end of this month, the municipality of Metro St. Louis is having its annual installation dinner, you will be over at Renaissance by the airport there, you can contact the city clerk if you want to attend, I think it's on the 22nd, I think it is. Up at the state legislature, the Missouri House tomorrow is expected the third reading, House Joint Resolution 45, House Joint Resolution 45 would require that any proposed annexation or merger of any city or county within the state of Missouri first has to be voted on by the residents of that cities or counties that are affected by that proposed merger or annexation. That measure, once passed through the House, will go over to the Senate with about two weeks left of legislative session, I think we have an outside shot still of getting this through, the President pro tempore of the Senate has said he will get it signed to a committee immediately, once he receives the resolution, and push it as hard as he can to get going. With that, I have no further comments or questions. To entertain a motion for adjournment.
So who?
Second.
Motion's made second, those who favor signature by the saying no.
Aye.
Close, saying motion carries, we urge you all, thank you all for attending.